Okay, so we're going to start the meeting. Some other councillors are en route. And first, to start off, we acknowledge, appreciate that the land in which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation and we've occupied the territory since time immemorable. Called to order, we do have representatives from the East Link Multi-Use Sports Entertainment Centre. Mike Russ is here for the 4A. And then when we go into close, I think Doug Demay will be part of that close session. So first of all, I have to add, ask any declarations of conflict of interest. See none. Okay. Approved the agenda for AB5, Section 119, subsection 1H. Moved by councillor Beck, seconded by councillor Matarde. All those in favor? Great. Okay, so the first presentation, Michael, do you want to take that? Oh, sorry. I'll start over. Resolution presentation, one plan in the Heritage Committee resolution. I'm going to turn it over to the Chair. Standing committee for planning.
Maybe if you want to put the resolution on the floor first and I can speak to it.
Right ahead, thank you.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Let it be resolved that the operational hours as outlined in the attached pedestrian mall agreement, as they pertain to the Victoria Row Merchants Association, be amended to permit patios to remain open until 1:00 AM rather than 12:00 AM. And that this adjustment be approved on a pilot basis for the 2025 season with a formal reassessment to occur at the end of the summer season or early 2026, with the possibility of including a public engagement component to inform future decisions.
Okay. Do you wish to speak to it first, Madam Chair?
Thanks, folks. It's pretty self-explanatory and there's more detail in the report in your package. But really, what we're just looking for to ask council is to give those folks on Victoria Row an opportunity to recoup some of their losses that they may feel they've suffered with all the renovations happening. So we thought if we were going to pilot at any time, this would be a great year to do it. Also, coupled with the idea that we're already reevaluating our patio bylaw in the coming year, so this is just a good opportunity to see if it does work out. So we're just asking council to support the resolution to move the hours from the Vic Row patios from midnight to 1:00 AM. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer, or we also have Director Mike here as well.
Any questions? Concerns? Comments? Questions called? Right on. All those in favor? Contrary? So that's six-zero and missing is councillors Twill, Dron, Bernard and McKinnon. Okay. So the next item is, thank you, Michael, is our group here from East Link Multi-Use Sports Entertainment Centre. I know that John Abbott has updated the file, so the file that came to you in your email, he has an updated version. Is that correct, John? Just...
Yes, Your Worship, but just some of the drawings are a little bit bigger. The detail itself hasn't changed.
But you're going to be presenting them on our own screens, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, John, do you want to just introduce your group and then we can start from there? You look like you have... Do you have anyone out in the hallway?
Well, there's some still waiting to get parked outside, but we'll wait. We'll get them in when we can. So we've got our Chair Phil, we've got from Coles, we've got Scott McNeil, I've got Doug Coles, and I've got JV Javier, and I see Nazmy struck in over there, but he was one of the late parkers. So we're all here to make this presentation. Appreciate the opportunity to come in from the Mayor and council. We're on this road that we started back in, I guess, early May. We've gotten to this point where we have some drawings, we have some designs. We're pretty excited about it and certainly excited about the opportunity for council to witness what they've supported at this point. Lots of work left to do, we all know that, but we're anxious to move forward and let everybody in this room see where we're at today. So if that works, Tracy, I'll try this. There we go. So the, I mean, it's just a quick presentation in the background. You know, we have an aging facility, we all know that from before, built in 1990s. It's been assessed as having significant remaining useful life. We had that done early on with the engineers, but we need major repairs and we need a system improvements. So to better serve the community, there's an opportunity to address these needs and more. Sorry, I'll get used to this. So the why is, you know, we want to create more opportunities for community access. I think we've been challenged in that regard and that's something that we've held ourselves to a high standard. We want to create a better experience for our users and our fans and we want to remain competitive in a never more competitive market that we face in this day and age. So we want to be able to host top-tier events. We're looking forward to be able to do that. Our goal is to be a leading destination, oh, sorry, that connect community sport and entertainment. It's a challenge from our customers, our clients, our guests from city itself, and this challenge has been accepted by the board. We're excited about where we're heading. But we know we've got a lot of work left to do, so. So the new proposed features, as you can see, there's a new exterior facade as part of the, it's a 7,800 square meter build-out. It's going to be more spectator seating, 5,000-plus. Our benchmark was five and we've challenged calls to come up with that within the footprint and they have. We have some premium seating available. We have a walking track that will be on the second level concourse for community use. Two new multipurpose community rooms, which can be used for community meetings, community get-togethers, whatever it might be, that'll have access from outside, so that's exciting. We have more accessible seating areas, second-floor standing room that'll overlook the arena. The events, the universal washrooms, a nursing room. We have accessible dressing rooms, including washrooms and showers that we haven't had before. We'll have water refill stations throughout the facility, escalators, two new public elevators, including a service elevator, so we can move material up and down a little easier. A secure backstage back-of-house area, that's a key issue for entertainers or people coming in. That was one of the things that we've kept hearing time and time again, that there was no secure area down where the people could get around the building. We have that rectified now. There's six new box suites that there's a lineup for today. We'll have no trouble moving them for any event that we have in there. We had graduations the last couple of days and they were using box seats, so it's pretty exciting. We'll also have space to accommodate a second Zamboni, which I see in the future probably being a requirement for some of the top-tier events that we hope to gather, so we have that. And the administrative office is easier to access, being on the front of Kensington Road as opposed to coming in the length of the building and up a flight of stairs to get to our administrative offices and also any other administrative offices. So we're excited about that. So the architects of an engineering design, I'm going to turn this over to Scott McNeil from Coles to kind of walk you, I'll see if I can handle the button, but we'll have Scott walk you through the design concepts and how we got there and where we're going. Thank you. Here, I'll just push it.
Thank you, John, and thanks, everyone, for allowing us to present today. Is there any chance, Your Worship, that I can use the computer mouse just to... No? Okay. Will that show on everybody's screen?
Oh, there it is.
Oh, perfect.
You told me that.
Okay. So on the... Yeah? Yeah, it's working perfect. So on the screen right now, you can see this is Kensington, Kensington Road here. The original East Link Centre is in this color. You can see the, it goes around in that shape. This is sort of slow, but this is working. This other color is, you can see the expansion we have along Kensington and then the expansion along the side towards Park Street and as it goes around the back by the racetrack here. So there's, it, oops. The, we are growing the building quite a bit and it's taking up a significant amount of parking. I know that's something that is, we've been talking with stakeholders as well. This parking, I lost it now. It's all right, everyone. There we go. So adjacent to the residential, we have allocated some parking space right here. We have some parking space onsite back along by the race truck as well here. And then along Kensington, we have new... Sorry. We have new sidewalk along Kensington and then on the bottom of the screen, adjacent to the residential is basically an access road and firetruck access route that goes around to the back of the site. So if we go to the next slide. So the reason we're showing this slide, you know, is to show the overall context of the site, the entertainment district of where all the entertainment and excitement's going to happen. So we see the racetrack, you can see the casino, the New East Link Centre, and what we're showing here is, you can see where Park Street parking lot is, the Holland College, some, you know, also the Red Shores parking lot. So we're showing this because there's obviously ongoing conversations about parking. It's not all been resolved yet, but those are conversations that we're constantly working on and discussing. So... Okay, so, this is tricky. So this is the main floor of the East Link Centre. Obviously, you can see the ice sheet here. The original, the original building is being expanded along Kensington. Oh. Along Kensington and down along the Park Street side. So I'm just going to give a high-level overview here first because my thing's not really working that well. So when you come in, the main entrance of the existing East Link Centre here right now, this is the existing main concourse, and that still stands. We are expanding it, making it a little bit wider, but the entrance from through is still remaining. We're doing a new entry vestibule at the centre, but as John mentioned, we are putting escalators in where the red dot is, and those escalators are going to crisscross when there's an event happening. Everybody's going to come in and have the opportunity to go up to the concourse level. There's no access to the, your seats from this level anymore. Everybody comes in through the main doors, there's a concession there. We're sending everybody up to the concourse level to then, you know, there's amenities up there, washrooms, and that's where you'll go down to your seat. We also have, and then after an event's over, for example, those escalators will switch and will also help to, you know, vacate people out of the facility. There's also, in each of the corners, in each of the corners, there's quite large exit stairs that we have in here because of the capacity to exit all the people out, given that we don't have ground adjacent to the concourse and it's requiring us to take everybody down and not exit at grade anymore. As a note as well, on the side of the building here, we have a secondary entrance. Adjacent to this is community amenities, community room, washroom, an elevator to the second floor. On the second floor is the walking trail. So we, the intent is that the facility is open to the community, even if there's an event not happening, and this would be your entrance point here to that. There's universal washrooms and all the amenity requirements there for using that room. On this plan as well, there's new offices planned for along Kensington. We're still making access for the truck to come in off Kensington Road for facilities and different events that are happening in there. The, down here where John mentioned, we have Zambonis, so we're accommodating two new Zambonis here. The Islanders dressing room will be in this location, and then there is some dressing room changes all along this side as well. And adjacent to this new entrance room, we also have several new washrooms. If I go to the second concourse level here, you can see, these are the escalators when you come up, and on this level, we, this is where you have your new concourse going all the way around. And if you look at the drawing here, what we're, in simple terms, doing is where we're adding three, we're adding three new rows of seating all around the perimeter of the arena. Those three rows basically move outwards from the, where the existing wall is on the arena, just to give you a context of how much the facility's growing. So you can see the, you can see the walking trail track going around here. We have concessions in the purple, top left, top left corner, bottom left corner, and over here on the, on the side. Washrooms in the green, and then in the orange and the gray in the corners, we have our access stairs. We are doing some new expansion and raising of the concourse in a few areas, and I don't necessarily need to get into that in too much detail here. But on the next slide, we have new box suites. On the left-hand side of the drawing, you can see these are the existing media boxes on this side, and so at the same level, we're putting new, six new box suites over here, accessed by elevator and staircases with a lounge up here as well. On this, on the second level concourse, these are the existing, the existing box suites that are here right now, the private box suites. And the feature seating or the premium seats are on the left-hand side of the drawing down there, adjacent to, adjacent to this concession bar that's there as well. In terms of the exterior, so conceptually, these are the images of the expansion that we're looking at implementing. Our goal here is to have a new, fresh facility that, you know, excites people to come to. It's going to have the green and blue pattern that we see at the main, at the main entrance along Kensington Road is a node to PEI barn quilts that you would notice if you're driving around Prince Edward Island where the quilt signs and patterns are put on barns. So we took that as a cue to connecting this to the overall PEI context, and that's where the green and those patterns are coming from as that idea. We have, looking at the idea, having a large screen here and another screen there for different events that might be happening outside the facility just to gain excitement before you even come in, but also too for marketing and the like. Lots of opportunity for signage on the building. We haven't quite put our flagpoles in yet, but we will have those coming along. Down along this side of the building down here, that secondary entrance I was speaking of before, maybe I should be pointing somewhere else? On the bottom image, on the right-hand side, you can see a little bit of green there. That's where the secondary entrance is. I was speaking to the community rooms. That's that location, obviously, where the Civic Centre says there, that's parallel to Kensington Road. So, yeah, I mean, the whole exterior envelope of the building is being expanded out. Some of the construction plan here is that implementation of all this is that the existing arena will generally stay as it stands. The contractor would build the expansion and then we would, after that's built, we would then take the exterior wall cladding off and make connections back in through and deal with some of the renovations in there. Obviously, there would be some renovation work happening in at the same time, but it'd be more just picking around at things. So that's the intent for the phasing of the construction project. And then we also have another image. The top one is a view, if you're standing at the corner by the racetrack, looking back at that, that's the entrance in towards the main concourse space. And then the bottom one is another view from Kensington Road up closer to the building. So you can see that's the main entry there where the cursor is now, as, and there's, you know, opportunity there for some rain protection and a soffit and entry to the space as well, so. And then we, so you can see here in this, this view here, these, you're looking from the new concourse down through where these columns, these columns are basically the exterior wall now. So then here's the new rows of seats here that we have conceptually in this image, and if you look really closely on your screen, you can, you can pick up the escalators right here. So this is that far corner, looking, sorry, looking back down towards the ice area. So when you're on the concourse level, if you're up there getting a snack or something or going to the washroom, you always have the opportunity to see what event is actually happening, you know, where now you kind of remove yourself from it and you don't have that sense of what's happening on the ice or at the event.
So just before you go on, if I'm in the rink right now, and I go up to the senator's room, the bar, is that, is this the bar area? Is this where the viewing glass is and where the...
That's right.
Is that, is that where it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your Worship, that, where the red dot is now, that's the current accessible viewing area by the bar?
It'd be right outside the bar.
That's, that's, oh, is that the bar down, like the, for the accessible viewing area?
Right there where that red dot is.
Okay.
That's, that's that point.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, in this pillar, that pillar would be there?
That pillar will be there. That column will be there. So we are, I mean, this image isn't shown in here, but we are doing more detailed reviews of where there will, where there are seats behind columns and where we're going to remove some for view angles, but it still allows us to get to the 5,000 count.
In your second row there...
Councillor...
Oh, sorry.
Well, your second row there, I noticed there's a wall, the blue wall. Are they going to be able to see? Or what's the story is that?
That's the same thing. Those are, this is just a conceptual...
Okay, that's not going to be there.
This is a conceptual image that we pulled together to help just get a three-dimensional context of this.
Okay, okay.
In our plans, we're looking at, as John says, we're fairly early days. We are starting to go through more. Can we add a seat here? Can we take this one away? What's the view angle, testing all those?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be that second seat from the left with the column in front of you. You wouldn't be seeing too much.
No.
Hey. Any questions for Scott? Well...
Any questions? Councillor Beck?
Just, it looks great. It's pretty exciting, I think, actually. Just a couple of questions. The parking coming out, so if you go in currently on the, what, you know, where VIP parking is, go to an Islanders game, you go in and... So are we going to be basically left with, if you have cars close to the building, cars in the middle, and cars on the right, are we only going to be left with this space over here, or is that space gone too, pretty much?
Can I bring that up there, guys?
Yeah.
The image? I know what he's talking about.
Yeah. Is there any, so you see where those arrows are going back and forth, right?
Yeah.
Is the only parking going to be down in that new area, down in the bottom left, in that gray area right there?
That and the upper side, up by the walkway coming in the back.
Okay, so where that green area is, that's just going to be grassed or something, is it, there's no parking there?
We're getting pretty close to the, the property line that.
The property lines, okay.
So we have to have that, that, that right-of-way for emergency vehicles, et cetera, you know, whatever might have to go in there, deliveries, trucks drop off in some respects. So, yeah, we're, like, there's a hundred, I believe I counted right, there's 121 spots over there that we will lose, and then there's, I think there's like 15 and 30 that we'll gain on that, on those two ends, so, you know, I guess, I guess my, my thought is that it's VIP parking in the Islanders cell.
Yep.
So it's not, I don't think it's as much the general public that get in there on big event nights or big event times.
Yes.
So, and I think to Scott's point, when you really look at what's available in a very close proximity to the building, like I've often said, we, and we measured it from Red Shores to our building, and from Park Street parking lot or Beach Street, whatever you want to call it, to the building is almost identical.
Hmm.
But you can't see the building from that Park Street parking lot, and I think that discourages people from saying, oh, they go to, they go into Red Shores and we never hear a thing, they walk up the sidewalk that the city has provided, back on Kensington Road, and there's never anything, but when they have to park at Park Street, it seems like it's a great big walk to come around, but it's, it's almost step by step, exactly, the same. So, and I think, you know, now with the, the collaboration with Red Shores, and we have an agreement in place, or very soon to be in place, to be able to use that parking facility as ours, so there's no fighting and somebody coming out and saying, you can't park here because you're going to the arena, or the concert, or whatever you're heading to. So I think that's going to be huge when we get that out in the public, that it's, you can go in a Red Shores parking lot and park anytime you want. I think it's always been, this is ours and this is yours, and you, we can't coincide, but I don't think that's the case anymore.
Right.
So, and, and, you know, I don't think anybody here will argue that parking's an issue regardless of what city you're in, where you go, how you get there, it's an issue. And we're cognizant of it, but we're also aware of what the, you know, what the benefits will be down the road for everybody, so. It's a constant conversation with, with, with Coles people and, and, you know, we're very aware of it and we know what's going to happen, but it's, it's inevitable if we want to move forward, you're going to have some, some shortfalls.
If you go to a game at the Scotiabank Centre in Halifax, you're walking two to three times further away from either parking spot that we would have around the Eastling Centre, so.
And the Avenue Centre is the same, if you want to pay 30 bucks, you can park next and up to the building, but we're not, we're not going anywhere near that for charging parking or anything like that. So I think that, you know, there's, there's challenges for sure, but they're not insurmountable.
No. I don't see it as an issue, I'm just asking the.
Yeah.
Asking the question. The gray area there to the left, John, that's just a, a walking area where the, you get the green over on the left side there, you get the, where the other entrance would have been to the rink? Is that no longer going to be right there, just to the left of that cursor?
Yeah, that's going to, that's still going to exist, and it'll be a drop-off for buses, cars, handicap, mobility issues, that'll be a drop-off to the front of the arena, but they'll have to park off-site.
Okay.
Yeah.
And would they exit in the same area, just a little further north?
Yeah, the, the gray area is really just toned to be like concrete sidewalk, but it's still maneuver by, by vehicle.
Okay. Great. And just in the box office, is it in the same area? It's going to be in the same, it looked, it looks like it's in the same vicinity, is it still in that main concourse? Is it moving at all?
Yes, no, it, well, it'll be revamped and redone, but, but yeah, it's going to be the same access right inside the building.
Okay.
Yeah. And you'll be able to go in there where they would have to go into the building, so.
Great, thanks.
Counsel Bernard, I took you off, can you just go on there again then? Go on.
Thank you, your worship.
And then Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Yankoff, go, go ahead.
My question is along the same lines on, on the parking, John, I'm just wondering if I heard you right, so, you say there's 121 parking spaces lost, and then there's 45 gained? Did I hear that right? Is that, is that the total loss, is 121?
Uh, no, we, we kind of keep the, I'm trying to look here, we kind of keep the parking that's in front there now, where, I don't know, I think there's 32 spaces maybe by the Trade Centre side there, but I mean, a good bit of that's going to go to, going to go to handicap parking. Yeah, if you kind of, what's there now is not going to change. What's going to change is this, on the side, on the west side, we call it, the west side of the building.
Right, right.
We're going to, we're going to lose all that.
Okay, so the net loss is what?
Well, we're not 100% sure yet, but, but it.
You have a rough figure though?
It's probably going to be, I would say, 60, 80.
Okay. And I know there was talk about, you know, the other rinks and some of the issues we're having, is there any other opportunities for us for parking, whether it's the Holland College parking lot or the one across from Beach Street? I think we use the one across from Beach Street now, do we not?
So there's, there's a City's parking lot that's right on, on Park, through, through that, which is now fenced off because of the, the Overreach Centre, but then CADC own that lot, which we have access to. And then west of that is the Holland College parking lot. So all of those are open.
Is your, is your access to it, John, from the parking lot we use now, into the CADC one?
We have to work with the Overreach Centre to have those gates open, but yeah, for instance, Old Home Week, we use it.
And is there access into the Holland College one?
Yes.
Okay. Right. And those are agreements that we possibly could work at. I'm just looking at, we're going from 3,500 to, 3,500 to 5,200, so, we're losing some parking, we're going to have a lot more people coming, it'd be nice if we can kind of work at something where we can get some more parking. Those may be.
No, and I think, I think that's, that's fair, Counselor, thank you. I just, I just note, just today, for instance, or yesterday, I guess we had the Charlton Rural Grad ceremonies at.
Seen that.
You know, they had 375, I think, graduates, we probably had, I'm going to say 12 to 1,400 grandparents, parents, family members in the arena, they were parking in St. Averts. So it's, you know, it, it's a problem no matter what we have in the building, there's not enough parking right on-site. We're not, we're trying as best we can not to create any more hardship, but even as far as Old Home Week, we have to sit down and be willing to work out some deal with the province to have access to that CADC lot, have security there because of just what's happening around that area.
And that's, and that's a possibility, John, because usually the evenings that we're looking for the extra parking, so the CADC would possibly Holland College.
I, I, we, we use them now, so.
Okay.
There'd be no, there'd be no change in that regard, yeah.
Okay. But CADC would be a change.
It's just the access through from, I mean, you can come from CAD, from Grafton Street on this, into CADC lot, you just can't come through the gates, so we, we always, it's a constant.
Yeah.
It's a constant fix-around to.
Right.
To work with them.
It's a possibility that we could possibly work with them for.
Yep, very much so.
Plan looks great.
Thank you, we're, we're excited, we're excited, yeah.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lanny Yankoff, Ward 1.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. My first one would be, the city had consulted with Jonathan Hack on a few different occasions, and he's, I mean, we all know he's a leading sports and entertainment consultant, and he created a few reports, and I'm just wondering if, did you look at anything in those reports, like factor it in, like any of his visions when you were, when you were coming up with its design? Just, I know we spent a lot of money on those, and I'm just wondering if there was, if there was any benefit to those reports that would help with the vision for this renovation? That's my first question.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Yes, we've, we've looked at all six of those reports, I believe I have, in my possession, and we certainly were aware of some of the ideas that, that the Hack project brought through, and we included them in this.
And Deputy, I, I think that Wayne was also part of that study. Wayne, do you, do you want to ask him if he could add, do you have anything to add, Wayne, to the John Hack report?
Your worship, I don't have a lot to add, although to the Deputy Mayor's point, Council did engage Sierra Design and Management to produce a couple of reports from Council. Some of you have asked me over the years for copies of those reports. If you'd like them circulated again, we can certainly do that. There was vision in there to replace the two current community arenas, one has already happened with Simmons, as you're well aware, and then Civic Centre was also addressed in there with respect to a new build and a potential twinning. So we can certainly circulate those to the, the committee, and there's at least two, as per the Deputy Mayor indicated.
Deputy, do you want to follow up?
Great. My only other question, I guess for now, would be, I know last week you made a great announcement with the Scotties coming, and I'm just wondering, probably that everyone's asking this question, how will the renovations be, impact these events coming, or, or how will the events be impacted by the renovations?
Thank you, Counselor. We don't foresee anything, we've talked to Curling Canada extensively, they're aware of everything that, that's gone on, or going on, or planning to go on. Again, it's, it's, it's the first step, but, but there is contingencies in place if something happens. We've already indicated that we would probably shut down construction the month of February of that year, so that we wouldn't have any more disturbances than we can. Again, it's getting people to the facility, the inside of the facility won't change, so it's going to look exactly the same on TSN as it would today. The exterior will certainly be under construction, but there'll be nothing going on during the event, and they're quite happy as long as we have access, and that'll be a plan that we, that we will work diligently on to make sure that we minimize as much as we possibly can. Again, you know, in, in the Scotties in Thunder Bay, there was no on-site parking, they, they bussed people in, or you parked in, you know, various places around the facility, and you walked, and they had no, no issues whatsoever, they, they ran shuttles from hotels and stuff, so I don't, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel, we'll have, we'll have those plans in place.
Good, Deputy, very good, okay. Counselor McLeire, and then Counselor Matarde.
Thank you, your worship, thank you for the presentation, guys, great, after a great start, it looks like, in this. Just, just curious, the box suites, so if, if this plan comes to, you know, comes to completion, how many box suites would there be? And then I'm just curious, I don't know if this is an appropriate question here or not, but is there consideration or talk that this structure too will be part of an, an emergency shelter for community? I know there was, there was talk, you know, of the, over discussions that we've had and, you know, for this location, I just wondered if that's, has to be taken into consideration or, or it's applicable on, on this renovation?
EMO site, Emergency Measures Organisation site.
As, as we stated in prior meetings, that there, there's a desire for us to be a, a safe site, and we're aware of that, we have, certainly have all the amenities that we need, and in this renovation, it'll even just increase it even more, so. So we're excited about being able to do that, Red Cross is excited, and, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we're ready, so.
Box suites?
Oh, sorry, the box suites will now be at 16. So six, 10 that are there and the six additional, so we'll be at 16 box suites.
Good. Counselor Matarde, Ward 2.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. As you know, it's my second opportunity to see a bit of this, so I did have a number of questions the first time we met, and a lot of those were addressed here this evening, so I won't go through those again, but I will highlight, obviously, one of the concerns that I raised, that, you know, from a local resident perspective, it's going to be parking, so we've discussed that in great length here this evening, and, and maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but I, I know there's a community meeting that is coming up, so, you know, I really want to emphasize the importance of, you know, soliciting that feedback from that surrounding community, from a parking perspective, but also from a, you know, a construction perspective, especially on the backside of Park Street, there will be a lot of construction happening almost on the back doors of, of some of those residents that, you know, follow that line all the way down, and I'm sure those questions and comments will be brought forward if they're, if they're in attendance that evening. But I know that public meeting is also open to all of, all residents across the city, so it's not all about Ward 2 or, you know, Park Street, B Street, so I don't want to make it about that, but I'll be certainly there representing their interest in, in the project, and, you know, I'm confident there should be support there, hopefully as people see the, these renderings and what it's going to look like, but, you know, I just don't want to lose sight of some of the, the natural things that come along with construction and things in a, in any area of the city that has an impact on people's daily lives, and this, I don't know if this is going to be a, a one-year project, two-year project, you know, and a lot of, a lot of banging and clanging, that might happen for a long period of time, so. Anyhow, I'm looking forward to the public meeting, and I know it's in the slide deck here, so I'll let you guys get to that, but just wanted to raise that, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and I, just a small footnote to that comment, we have in, in discussions now with the, with the sound engineers in Halifax, to come over and do an assessment of the building, both for, you know, we hear it time and again that our, although our sound system is the same as other facilities, it doesn't sound the same. So we want to make sure that if we do this, we're not going to be short-changed on how it sounds inside the building, with that is going to be construction noise as well. So they're going to give us, we're in the process now designing a document and giving us a quote, so that we can, we can take a look at those, so. And, you know, the hoarding area, we've talked about it many, many times, it, we're, we're very, very aware where we're going to be building already inside a residential area, so everything precaution that can be taken will, will be, will be taken for sure, we're just not at the point where I can say what's, what, exactly what's that going to look like, so, so thank you.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah. Sorry, I just had a couple of other things pop to mind as well, too. First question, John, is there any change on the Trade Centre side, or is it, or will it remain as is?
The only change on the Trade Centre that's not really part of this, of this thing is we're trying to, right now, negotiate a, through a, between the two to connect the two buildings. We've gotten plans, again, from, from Coles, we have some pricing, we're now in the negotiating stage with, with Atlantic Lotto to see what we can do, but outside that, it's not going to change the Trade Centre. A bit of an impetus in the back of our mind, I believe, is that when you see Red Shores and you see a new facility on our side, maybe the government's going to say, bang, we better do something with ours, so it's going to be bookended by pretty, two pretty nice facilities, so, if everything comes, comes out.
So that current breezeway or entrance, when you go in the main entrance of the Eastling Centre and veer to the left, is that going to be gone? Will that access still be there?
Yes, that'll, that'll remain.
Okay, okay, so no change in that?
No, no.
And going back to the other part about, you know, bookending with two nice pieces, we already have the expansion of the casino, which has bumped out further, what's that, east, I guess it is?
Yeah.
Whatever direction on the east side of that, east side of that building, yeah, whatever directional way we want to use it, if you, if you use east. There's also talk about, I've heard, possibilities of another expansion with a, a possible hotel unit coming in there as well, too. Would that bump out further east on that side? Is that where that would go, or where would that be located? And how would that potentially impact the surroundings of the redevelopment here?
I don't know.
Or is that, or is that far too preliminary?
Well, I, I mean, we've all, well, I don't know, we all have, but we, we.
And how would that potentially impact the surroundings of the redevelopment here?
I don't know.
Or is that far too preliminary?
Well, I mean, we've all, well, I don't know, we all have, but we've been in constant contact with Red Shores on both expansions. We've seen what their ideas are five, six years out. The expansion there now is, it came out 10,000 square feet. That has some impact on parking, not significant, because the plan, I believe, is to add 200 spaces somewhere else on that footprint. So, and the hotel, you know, the talk is, you know, could be up to 100 rooms, and regulations, I believe, is a parking space for each room. So, that's going to have to be, you know, that's going to have to be dealt with. But I think it'd be a stretch for me to kind of talk about too much of what their plan is.
That's a question for Dave McKenzie, or Mike McKenney.
Yeah, but we are certainly in contact.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Good. Councillor McLeire? Good. So, Scott, Scott, right?
Yep.
So, on page 23 of our digital presentation, it's 7,800 square meters is the buildout, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, that's 84,000 square feet. What's the current, you, Doug, or the engineers, what's the current footprint of the facility? Is it 300,000?
I mean, if you take it, you know, two stories high.
No, footprint, just the footprint.
But it's not, yeah, it's not going to be a 700.
Yeah, I don't have that figure here.
So, if we look at the north side, if you can just go to that print, on Kensington Road. So, all the parking out front there, Scott, will that be, like, I'm just trying to figure, what do you lose out there on the front on Kensington Road with the buildout? Anything?
Yeah, basically, all this parking is, this is going to be drop-off.
Okay.
Right here.
No parking, just drop-off?
Right.
Okay, okay. And then, on the southeast entrance, which is now, comes off Park Street or Beach Street? Can you go to that entrance, right down there? So, there's an entrance, a southeast door, and then there's also doors that go right on to the racetrack. Are you eliminating any of those, both doors, or just one?
These doors are all staying, and there's going to be doors here that main corridor through with the escalators will...
Those doors will stay?
Yeah.
And there's another set of doors that come off the southeast side?
And then we have doors here on the side.
Yeah.
That's the community entrance.
I know that entrance, but there's, are there not doors down on the southeast side?
Currently?
Yeah.
Yes.
They'll be gone?
They'll be gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right now, we have four small entrances, and, sorry.
Currently, we have four, like a main entrance, the back entrance that gives us our north-south traffic.
Right.
For want of a better northeast, southwest, whatever. And then, so the two corner entrances now, they're going to disappear, and one main entrance in the center, so that it's more community access, that we can control how the traffic flows through, in and out the building.
Right.
So, there will be exits on those corners, like, but not entrances.
So, if you can see the stairwells, yeah, like the main entrance here, and then there's another main entrance here. So, that's where all the public will come in to load into the escalators to go to the concourse. Then there is, on the left-hand side in the dead center, is the community entrance, or a minor hockey will enter to access the dressing rooms. Any other doors you see around the facility, or exit doors from the second level, or the main floor, or just maintenance doors?
Okay. So, John, estimated cost? Think you've said it before? Same, hasn't changed?
It, we have a Class C estimate.
Yeah.
We started out when we repriced the 2004. Estimates to current day was 38, a little north of 38 million. Now, as we get into a little more detail on what do we want, we're a little north of 40. But there's still some, there's still some heavy work to do yet. So, we don't really have a, we don't really, at this time, have a concrete kind of number where we're at. But we've asked Coles to, then, you know, to kind of include a, I don't know if I want to call it a wish list, but things that we think that are important, whether that be, you know, entrance through electronic, you know, stuff that... So, we've asked them to cost us, so we have an idea as to where we can be. That, we don't have that yet, but I expect we'll have that in the next, I don't know, couple of weeks, maybe, yeah.
So, we're still at 40 million?
Give or take, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. And then you, as councillor Beck talked about, Red Shores, racetrack and casino, they've done their expansion, 10,000 square feet. There are plans to look at accommodations. Like, this is becoming more and more a multi-use sports entertainment venue. And hopefully, we can get, and as the chief knows, we were, our chief, our CAO, we were over to St. John for the Atlantic Mayor's Congress, and one of the speakers talked about more public-private partnerships.
Right.
And Red Shores could be one of those partners, hopefully, going forward, because it'll benefit...
It's going to benefit everybody.
To all the partners.
Certainly them, yes, for sure.
Yeah.
You know, I had meetings this morning with the minister's office regarding Old Home Week, and, you know, that's the place that we want to build on. We think we can build on it. It's sort of, I don't know if the word stagnant is the right word or not, but there's so much opportunity there that we believe can, you know, can be realized. When you get people together in a room, it's surprising what you can get done. So, we're excited about that, too, and hopefully, down the road. I mean, we're set there for this year, and probably next year, but there has to be a plan put in place for down the road, what's going to happen in that, you know, that's an icon in Prince Edward Island. I mean, so, we can't just kind of ignore it. We know we're going to have an effect on it, but there may be all kinds of other ways that we can make things work.
Well, by far, it's the best harness racing venue east of Woodbine Raceway in Toronto, there's no doubt. And that's what we can build on. Other racetracks in the regions are having difficulty holding on, like St. John is no longer a racetrack. Truro and the other tracks are just tippy, but this is the venue to work on.
Yep.
Councillor Ramsey.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Funding is going to be the make-all, break-all. And because we, as a city, probably won't be able to fund the whole thing ourselves, as you probably know that, John. So, you'll be working with other parties along that line? Or is that the city's job, or how does that work?
Thank you, councillor. No, we have a plan in place to seek funding in many different areas. We've got a good group put together for, you know, for that purpose, and we're excited to get that started. That, just to go back to, you know, to go back to the timelines, might be a little easier to understand. So, back in February, when the council gave us the funding support to get to this point, March and April, we started to kick off. We had meetings. We've met every two weeks with Coles, back and forth, back and forth, all kinds of time spent on it. In May, we started meeting with stakeholders. We met every week with Coles again, and all our stakeholders. So, they all had an idea where we were heading, or what our thoughts were. And they, you know, we had 100% buy-in from every person that we met with. Right now, we're in the community meeting phase. As the mayor mentioned, it's Thursday, and Councillor Matar. Thursday, open house, you know, tonight is step, first step to let council kind of know what's ahead. Thursday, from 3 to 5 at Eastlink Centre, we're going to have, you know, typical community meeting. It's a drop-in. There's not, no structure to it. Anybody can come at any time, and hope they bring all kinds of questions. We have designs that are finalized coming up pretty soon. The community engagement, you know, there's a website. We have it up now with renovation. We're on Facebook, Instagram. We're getting comments every day. The survey is now open. We have a community survey. They can go online. We also have that at the public engagement. So, in person, they can come visit the Eastlink Centre. We have questionnaires there for anybody that wants to get their, you know, get their two cents in for... So, yeah, so we're inviting everybody. We hope to get a huge turnout, because we want as much information and feedback as we can possibly get, you know, for ourselves, and also for Coles, to give back to Coles, to say, you know, this is what people are saying, and we want to make sure everybody has their say. So, that's it.
John, just on that, if you don't mind?
Yep.
You're saying it's Thursday, and as we all know, timing, like the time of the year that we're in right now, graduations, and I was one of the ones that was there yesterday for my granddaughter. The place is jam-packed. But at the same time, we find it hard sometimes, too, when we have public meetings in the summer, to have the people there. If there's not a whole lot show up, would it be a possibility to have another one in the fall? Or is that too late, or what's that? Because I think the more input you get, like, the better it's going to be for everybody. But in the summertime, people go on holidays, school's ending, the whole nine yards. I'm hoping the place be packed on Thursday, but, you know, just in case that it isn't.
Yeah, we wouldn't be opposed to having a second go at it, for sure. We're the same, and we were well aware that school closes on Thursday, and, you know, it's just timelines are what they are. We tried to fit everything in, even to become here was a challenge for, I'm sure, your people and ours. But we want to be as open and transparent as we can be, and we hope there's 500 there, and they all write down a whole bunch of stuff. But we are aware, and if it's not, you know, if we don't think we get enough feedback from it, then we're certainly open to having another one. Yeah, so...
Councillor Matar.
Yeah, just on that, John, I guess, you know, and thank you, councillor Ramsey, for bringing that forward. How have you been promoting that? Because I guess from a, I'd be more worried about it if people did see that. I'm sure you said it was on your Facebook pages, but we, as a city, didn't send out anything publicly, did we? On our channels, or?
Wayne, I don't think we did, no.
Or James here? Is that something we should be doing? I guess I'm just worried, and now I'm starting to think, like councillor Ramsey, that this time of the year, I'd be, you know, if people will get the message and got the message, and will actually attend. Anyways, I guess we'll find out. We're a little late now, but 48 hours away. But it's probably something that, yeah, we could have sent out.
I know we had an extensive email list for public and press and stakeholders, that reminders are out today, and then reminders out again tomorrow. We're just, yeah, any avenue that we can come up with, we're looking to get the notice out that we're having this Thursday. If the city can put it on their website, that'd be awesome, too.
It's going to be ongoing anyways. You're going to be out there consulting with the public. So, John, what you need from us tonight is a green light, correct, to keep moving forward, correct? Is that what you want? Like, what's, what you're asking?
Well, I think, I just think before we went public, we wanted to make sure the council knew where we were, and, you know, yes or no, I think we're into it now where we have to come to the end of this step. The funding piece is, as you see, they'll take place this year. We understand that that's, you know, we're not, we're just on paper, you know, and in our heads where we think this could be. We know that, to councillor Ramsey's point, if we don't have funding partners, we're not going to go anywhere. So, we understand that, and, you know, we've been in, you know, easy talks with different departments and agencies, and we have plans to meet with government officials in the very near future, now that we're at the point where it's going to be public. And, you know, we'll know very soon, I think, whether there's an appetite to move forward or not. And if it's not, you know, so be it. But there's been an awful lot of work done, and, you know, we feel that we're in a good place. We feel that we've done a good job, and we just hope we can get the buy-in from the funding partners to say this is the proper road to go. So, that's where we're at. So, anyway, and the building permit process, just to finish that off, is just, I mean, that's all in the future, but we're excited at this point to be where we are. So, we think the design is great. We think the inside is going to be fantastic. We think it's going to be community-oriented. Yeah, so, it's not just going to be an arena. It's a new event centre that the city can be proud of.
So, the members present here tonight, is it a good feeling to go forward? Like, I'm just, I just want to, I don't want to speak on my own. Look, I'm in support of it, but I want to...
It's an information session tonight, correct?
What's that?
The information session, so, but, like, bringing councillor off his day, does he have to drop off?
No, but the thing is, but the issue here is that he's going to have a community meeting on Thursday. Like, are we asking him to come back here to say, "Okay, looks good. Community meeting is positive. Ready to go, move on"? Like, I think we just have to start, we have to make, we have to make a decision. Go ahead there, councillor.
I think, your worship, whenever council agreed to the $2 million to do the engineering and architectural design, that was to get us to this step, and that's where they are now. So, the next step would be to go out and see if they have funding partners. So, to me, it's an automatic. I mean, it's just part of the process.
Yeah.
And this was a great update to let us know where they were.
Yeah.
The drawings are in.
Councillor Beck.
Yeah, and just to add to that, we need this in order to be able to speak about funding. So, if we don't have this level done, there's no discussions. So, if we get this part done, then we can move to the next level. I say just keep going. I think it's great. I think it's exciting. I think it's, I think there's, you know, it sounds like the pieces are in place on your side with the board of directors, the work that you guys have done. You've got people who know the building well, and Coles, they've been very involved in it over the past number of years. So, there's all kinds of good pieces to, or all kinds of good reasons to keep going, so I say...
Yeah, and that's what I want to do, is keep going. But I think I want to define a role for us. Are we just going to be the spectators watching John and his group go knocking on doors? Or are we going to be knocking on doors, too? Because we, you know, I believe in the project, because John has already said it, you do nothing. You build a new facility, $200 million, or you renovate. Well, we're at number three. We're renovating. So, if I'm speaking to the Sean Casey's, or the Heath McDonald's, or MLAs, I want to be banging the drum to say, "Look, we all have to get on board." And why not take a trip to Moncton and meet with the ALC to say, "Where are you in this whole big picture of making this facility"? And not only work for the City of Charlottetown or the Eastlink Board of Directors, but the whole Eastlink, Red Shores, racetrack, and casino, everything that is going to benefit from this, from this expansion. Councillor McLeire.
Yeah, no, your worship, just like to, yeah, I guess reinforce what's already been said. You know, we've got to continue to advance with this. We've put funding in our capital budget for this year to see this thing through, to, you know, to get the detailed plans that we need. We're on our way. We need those detailed plans to find funding partners, and we're not there yet. So, we, you know, to not continue the process, obviously, in my opinion, wouldn't make sense. At this point, we've got to keep going, and we're off to a great start, and hopefully, we can get the loop closed on it and get a project going. Thanks.
John?
Well, thank you, everybody, for hearing us out. Appreciate the time, the comments, they're always welcome. And, your worship, if you want to knock on some federal doors, you go right ahead.
Don't mind doing it at all.
No.
Walking, knocking, talking, kissing babies when I have to.
I understand that fully. So, thank you, council, and your worship for allowing us to present.
So, or, CAO Brad, do you just want to add a couple of comments? Go ahead there.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and great presentation, John. Obviously, you guys put a lot of thought and work into it. I'm just thinking, as we try to move the marker forward here, that we look at potential dates to come back to council and provide updates, probably would be beneficial.
Sure. No, anytime council will listen to us. We're, you know, we had the, we had the...
we had the Curling Canada people with us, uh, earlier the week, uh, the, the big event was on top of mind for, for all of us, and, uh, we didn't hear any no's, so, um, those things are open, if, if this comes through, they're excited about it. Um, I think Curling Canada's mandate is to get, to get to places they don't get, and, uh, you know, we may not have everything that some have in Ferris capacity, but we certainly have punch, uh, punch above our weight in all other stuff that we have, being hotels, restaurants, uh, second to none in the country, so, it's not all, for them, it's not all about, uh, how many, how many butts they put in seats, it's the experience that, that, uh, that the people have, and that's, yeah, and that's our, I mean, that's front of mind for us too, it's the experience that the, that our guests have when they come into the facility, and, uh, I think we're on the right track, I think we're, uh, we're far way ahead than we were, I see the population base, I think when this building was built was a, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, and I see the other day it was a hundred and eighty, so, I mean, people are not stopping to come, um, so we need to be able to, to service those people what they desire, so.
Yeah, and it's not just a rink anymore, it's a multi-use sports entertainment.
Exactly.
Counselor, Bernard?
Uh, just one last question, John, I'm just wondering, um, any plans for, so the fundraising part of it now is your next step, and so you're looking at putting a committee together and have a goal, or?
What, what, what we have in place is a, is an advisory group that, uh, you know, that, that they're pretty, uh, I, I would say, pretty outstanding citizens of, of the city, uh, and, uh, they will, you know, along with, with everybody here, will be getting us through some of those avenues that we have to get through to get to the people that are gonna make the decisions, and, um, we're looking forward to that part of it, that's a, a big next step. But now, as I said, the council back in, you know, January or February, we need to be able to give them something to say, this is what we wanna do, this is what we envision the, the facility to look like, and, or, you know, are you on board or not? To go in and just say, we, you know, we wanna build something that's gonna give us five thousand seats, and we needed a, we needed a concrete plan, and I believe that we have that now, which is gonna make it easier to, um, present to the powers that be that, that will make some of those decisions, so, so we're looking forward to it.
So you do have, you have an advisory board, or a fundraising committee, or whatever you have?
Yes.
Okay, right on, perfect, perfect.
And, John, just to go back to page thirty-five of the digital copy, July to December, designs finalized and construction documents prepared, so, you're gonna be looking at this advisor committee working to put together some milestones in terms of fundraising, Coles Associates doing the design?
Yep.
And then, anything that you wanna come back to see us about, go through the new C A O, Brad McConnell?
For sure, for sure.
Make a date, and we'll be, we'll be here.
Look forward to it.
And, uh, make sure all the council gets out there, knock on doors, and raise some money for this new...
There you go.
New renovations.
I got a bigger committee than I started with.
As the Irving say, as the Irving say, get her done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, number five, motion to move into a closed session as per the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island, section one nineteen, subsection one H, information which, if disclosed, could prejudice security and the maintenance of the law, and it's a dignitary matter, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck, uh, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you, okay. Okay.
[inaudible][1145.21]